Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's school committee meeting, September 20th, 2016. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tonight, we have presentations and discussions from community school. Community School Update. Kaitlyn.
Thank you.
Yay! Hello, everyone, and hello, everyone. Thanks for having me today. Lots of great information to share with you. Any questions that you have as we go along, please feel free to chime in. What I typically do for you every year is share with you the data of the full year-to-year-to-year comparison, which is in your packet. And I will go through those a little bit in a little bit, but the real focus I wanted to share with you today is our summer program. So often, I don't have the data for the most recent summer because it's the beginning of the fiscal year. So we focused a bit more on that piece so I could give you the summer perspective over the years in a different way than I've been able to in the past. So the beginning of your packet, what I've got for you is really, you know, it was a wildly changing and fun year for us last year. You know, each year, we seem to move somewhere. We get to expand to 56th Century Street. We have a nice time working together and figuring as a team how to do the different things that the community wants to have and add community recreation and all the different pieces. And this year, there was a bit of some challenge with some medical leaves and also some changing staff right towards the end of the fiscal year. So I wanted to make sure you guys had an updated hierarchy of organizational chart, I guess is the way to call that. So I gave you the kind of the big picture view of the organization, and so that would be the big rectangles. So, you know, we have a new business office administration person. That is Sue Mittenen. Also new on this chart is our, and what I think the way this chart helps portray is the different hats that people wear. But also new on here, we have Katie Manchester, who's our new children's enrichment coordinator. We've increased Kelly Corvus' responsibility. She's been the artistic director for Dance Works for four years now, and she's added the program coordination piece in that as well. So Casey Weaver-Cotes used to handle that, and we've split that with her this year so as Katie gets her feet under her doing all the other enrichment pieces. And she's supporting her in that piece as well. Blair Janelle has been here with us. He's wearing the community rec hat and the teen enrichment hat as well. And Jim Pignato, as you know. He has a new assistant coordinator, and he has not had an assistant coordinator in name for some time. So I'm not sure that, I think he was the last assistant to a director of aquatics. So we've added Todd Bohannon as an assistant coordinator to Jim in the aquatics department, and that's been a good addition. There were some medical challenges, but he is back with us and working, and so it's been really great. And then our adult education enrichment coordinator, Cheryl Reichwinn. She is new as well. She came in in May, April, May of last year, and has already brought in a perspective for education pieces, for distance learning. She's an adjunct professor with Cape Cod Community College. She is, she works with Sengage Learning and does, writes curriculum for online learning for programs and for communications. She's a communications professor. So she brings a really unique perspective to how to build educational systems, how to engage people, and how to build something that's sustainable, that will meet the needs of the community. And so we're excited for that. And so I kind of skipped over some people because I was showing you who the new people were, but I do want to mention, we have our tried and true Elise Campbell doing our extended day program where we've expanded that in the four years that I've been here from 28 to 34 kids, and we're hitting around 60 kids now, between 50 and 60, depending on what day and how many days they come per week. So that's because I think such a nurturing, routine-specific program that is from her heart, that is replicated in three different cluster areas. And we wouldn't be able to do that if we didn't have Kim Kubisch supporting our use of her space. You know, that's very hard to come by. And so having that consistency for the kids has been really important. My son loves going there. He likes going to the club, but he also really likes that different type of environment. And so that's been something that we've enjoyed being able to expand a bit as we go. And then Pauline Cronin is our early childhood education coordinator, and she's been doing a stellar job with the grant. We're in our third year of a three-year grant, so we will be ramping up in March or April to write something to do in March or April because that's usually how that works. I think Pauline can relate to that. So, you know, we're just having a good time doing lots of different pieces. The most recentest person that we hired this fiscal year actually is Michelle Saravia. She is an employee that actually worked with us several years ago. You might know her as Michelle Portillo. She has left the island for a couple of years. She's working as our translator and our program assistant, business office assistant, and doing some HR pieces and helping Sue Mittenen and the program and the enrichment coordinators, making, she's kind of a jack-of-all-trades in helping assist in lots of different areas. And is very familiar with our community and bringing in already a focus in the early childhood department in particular with the families that speak Spanish. So we're excited to be able to add that to programming this year. Any questions so far? I believe the next page you have is probably the, are just the phone numbers to meet anybody and also the different titles. You'll see lots of different names wearing lots of different hats. It's how we do things. And then the next page is a more detailed view, which you won't be able to read because I can't read it. So, of course, you know, I don't have my glasses. Dr. Lepri, but it's more a breakdown, and this was emailed to you, and you can see it on the computer and expand very easily with the PDF. But you can really see how the breakdown and organizational structure of the community school is. So while we had some changes with our staffing, what that did is allowed us to really look at how and where we wanted to make shifts and changes. Where you can see it, when you can actually read it, is we shifted driver's education from where it was with adult education at the time. We've shifted it over to teen enrichment. So we do have people that are adults who are seeking driver's education courses and classes and driving time, but really, the bulk, there's a lot, but the bulk are our teen students that are our priority for getting on the road safely. So we felt that that was a better fit for supervision of that program, and so Blair is doing, as always, a very detailed, thorough job at making sure all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted for this program. And as much as he would like to deliver the car himself, as soon as we have a car, we'll be able to start the driving as well. But that is for the community that's waging to hear. It's been procured. We have it. We can't drive it until all the safety pieces are in place and the state approves us to be able to drive it. So that's where we are right now. And it's, and we are eager, just like everyone else, to have that happen. So we're trying to make it happen. So then, I also gave you a copy of our newest brochure. Oh, I know it. I wanted to say one other thing about the more detailed hierarchy, our organizational chart. With adult education, when we brought on Cheryl Reichwinn, one of the other pieces that we had been really focused and worried and wanting to support, not quite sure what area we were going to do that in, or how we were going to do that, was the nonprofit development on the island. So everything kind of came together with, we worked with Janice Kinder in the past, were doing strategic planning with her, and Cheryl was familiar with her. In fact, they'd worked together years ago. And so when we were looking at how, you know, what avenues in the adult arena, what could we do to support, you know, learning and growth with a number of nonprofits on the island, we felt that that was an important focus. We talked with Community Foundation, and together, we hosted a meeting with nonprofits in May of this, of the past fiscal year, but in May of this year. And we had a great turnout. Pauline was there. I think there were some other people. There were some other people. It was not just Pauline.
It was just a great turnout.
So, you know, there was a great turnout, and it was held down at the Culinary Center. It was, and we had really good feedback and energy around doing an assessment, needs assessment. So we went ahead, and we had already been in the process of bringing Janice onto our team, and she is now a part of the community school team. She comes to the island once a month for a set amount of time, and she will come more often as needed. But she is here and available, and you'll see in your beautiful new brochure, the coaches and services where you can get some, as a nonprofit, as a board member, or as a director, or as a member, you know, working within that field, needing any information or guidance on how to grow your board, or how to grow your organization that's a nonprofit, and the different guidelines. She's very focused and skilled at looking at strategic planning and figuring out what different organizations need. So we're excited that we've brought her on. We enjoyed working with her, and we're glad to add her to our team. And so far, we've had several, we've had really great feedback, and we are in some agreements already going forward with some strategic planning with some organizations. So I think you'll be seeing some expanding in that arena as well, while Cheryl Reichwinn's focus is on building the career process and the career access and where people are and where they want to go to next, and what kind of educational, the education. So that's where we are going forward, and we have this team that can really make that happen. And the numbers that you have in front of you show you what the team has done thus far. And so summer camp was the, so I've given you the whole view picture, where that's the larger page with all the numbers. This is what I've given you almost every year now. So this is giving you that comparison. What you have on the half sheet is the focus that I would like for you to take a look at, and this is about summer camps. That's why I gave you a copy of the brochure, summer camp, so you can see what's happening in the S. I should know the page number. Michael Proch is in this, and he is a very handsome fellow in there, as well as another, you know, handsome fellow named Peter Waddington. So, and maybe Max and some other kids that are in here. But that's the point of that brochure, is people like to see it. The kids like to see their pictures as well. So we've, so we've got, what I have in the final column is fiscal year 17 numbers. So when you're comparing that column with what's before it, everything before it is the full year numbers in that department. So adventure camps, you know, because it's ended, we are safer to go ahead and do that piece. What we've never had really listed before, so for those of you who don't have a packet in front of you, for those of you at home, you know, this fiscal year, we had 404 students in day camp, 186 in a specialty camp, and those are camps that we had Chinese culture, Chinese for Children Culture Camp. We held that, and I say camp, but it would say, I would say like classroom intensive. We had tutoring, actually. Somebody wanted specific tutoring for Chinese for their two children for a week, solid, and we created a program for them to meet that need and interest. We also had early bird specials, so if people needed to get to camp early, that would be a specialty camp for those families that need to work early. We collaborated with the Culinary Center with, to offer culinary classes and brought in Pauline Cronin, actually. Pauline, you just start everywhere. Pauline Cronin stepped in. We were having a hard time because all of the chefs, of course, are working in the middle of the summer. So it's hard to find that person that can do classes with kids, cook, bring in, and at that level, and also have the energy because they've worked a full shift cooking and baking and all the good things that go into tourist season on Nantucket. So Pauline actually stepped in and did some great creation of the Nantucket Young Chef Academy. That is the name of the summer program. And we are building that, and we have aprons with Culinary Center and community school logos on it. And kids were loving that, and that was very, very exciting and a fun piece to add. So that's something that, we had 186 children involved in that program this summer, 525 students involved in sports camps. The difference between FY '16 and '17 is that the final column, we only had seven weeks of camp, which does actually truly impact numbers, both on how many people we can influence and also the bottom line. So not having the specialty camps, I think, would be making very challenging for us this year fiscally, but we were able to weave in some half-day programs and afternoon programs at times, even bridge times. We had two bridge weeks this year. So those times between the end of camp and before school starts where we do more of an academic focus and stuff the backpack and, you know, rethink about what you need to do for school, while also gardening. We do that with Sustainable Nantucket. Those have really added, I think, to what, to the plate, but also to the different tastes that people can enjoy. So it was, it was exciting, it was, it's been an exciting summer. So I'm going to stop talking for a minute and see if you guys have any questions or thoughts, additions, subtractions that I should be doing.
Regarding drivers ed, is it now three drivers and three cars?
No, no, it's one car.
I'm just looking at the numbers. Do we feel like that's sufficient? Do you feel like that's sufficient?
Well, we have, it has been sufficient, is what I can say. I have, I have one driver that has been very interested in retiring for quite some time.
It's Karen.
And I have, you know, so I mean, I have really great, great, and we have a new driver that's come on, and, but that's, it's been hard to find a new driver. So I think right now, and going forward, the way that this has been structured is this is, this vehicle is a purchase. So going forward, we may have.
It's not leased.
It's not leased. It's not, it's, it's something that we could, you know, when we're, when we're, it's something that we could look into doing, getting another vehicle if we needed to. And then, but it's, there's also a balance where there's more cost to the vehicle, which was the one that was going out.
Well, my question is, both the drivers are teachers, which, right? And that means they have full-time jobs, or am I wrong?
No, two people, no, without getting too into the details of the employees, but there are, there are parameters around some retire, retirements that, on how many hours and how much they can earn. So I think right now, we're okay. I think the biggest issue is that we need the vehicle to be able to get caught up, and then it's pretty structured. There are only so number, so many hours in a day that a student can drive because they're at school.
Well, that's my point. I'm just thinking logically, the other part of it is nothing to do with the community school is the wait list for license down at the town building. That part, to me, is super ridiculous, that, you know, you have to get on this list, and your name comes around. If you're away in college, oh, well, you go back to the bottom of the list, or something like that. So I'm just putting that out there that, you know, I don't know. I just feel like a little more thought. I'm not saying this isn't one for you to do.
Right, no.
I just think if the whole picture can be looked at, and something, to me, that's a little bit more conducive to going through the kids, allowing them the time.
Right.
You know, allowing plenty of opportunity for them to get their driving hours in, as well as get in and get their licenses. I mean, you know.
But is that a registry issue?
It is.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's a, that part's a registry issue.
Couldn't they go over to the Cape and do it?
Yeah, well, that's easier said than done.
The issue is that is that they've not been trained in their driver's ed training classes to take that test that requires stoplights and some different things that they would encounter off-island that they don't manage or teach.
Yeah, it's not the thing.
It's true.
I mean, I'm afraid to drive off-island, so.
Yeah.
I asked that exact question in the driver's ed Q and A with one of the instructors, where they require parent night, and it's possible for your child to do it, and you can take them off-island and teach them how to drive off-island, but they, that's not what our instructors are training them to do.
It is a state limitation of them sending a person once, every two weeks.
Right.
On a Friday, one day a week.
One day a week on Fridays, and that's when the car is sent.
You mean, the state is limited. They can't do any more than that. Is that what you're saying?
Well, they've set that limit.
That's what they, yeah.
This is not.
It's the state of Massachusetts.
So.
I can't remember. We looked, years ago, looked into getting somebody qualified to do the testing here on the island, because that's what used to happen years ago. But I don't remember how far we got or what roadblocks were, but clearly, there were roadblocks because we don't have the person.
We were having roadblocks to getting more teachers, so we're really excited to have another instructor, and, and then also have the current instructor say, hmm, and I think, you know, he wants to stay on, and that might be helpful that we have a nice vehicle that will be comfortable to.
I think you're getting a little blocked up because, backed up because you haven't had the car, but hopefully, but when you get it.
They have a system.
They get into the routine.
Yeah. They have a system of who has what day.
Yeah, well, I was just looking at the numbers, too.
Yeah.
There was one year you had 227 applicants in 2014 or 15, I think.
Oh, well, thank you.
Just, I'm going to interject. I had asked Kaitlyn to really just concentrate on the summer programs tonight because when we do our budget presentations, you'll get all of the detail on the entire community school program.
Okay.
And in the past, we were sort of doing both twice. So that's why her focus tonight has been on the summer programs.
I'll just add that I think I applaud your creative thinking with the specialty camps this summer, and I heard from a number of very happy parents about the ability to fill the gap, and I think that there was a complaint in that, it was just there was not enough room to accommodate every child who needed care during those gap weeks, because it is pretty significant. I think you're the only game in town at that point.
Absolutely.
So for working families, it's very difficult to navigate that those last couple of weeks before school starts.
And I, I would just say that Kaitlyn and community school would do more if they had the space.
Yeah.
The problem is that we sort of pushed them out of the school at some point because we have to get the school ready for the school year, and we've been running summer programs all summer. And so she's probably more limited by space for the gap weeks than she is by, by staff, I would venture.
That is, that is definitely a factor, but we also understand the importance of having it in the school ready for learning, so that makes sense. I will add, though, there's a safety component. So right at the time that that gap happens, that starts, is the time when a lot of the counselors who've been working with the kids all summer head back to college.
Yeah.
So then you have fewer people who are trained, and you have an increase in kids who need care. So you have people that are tired from a very long summer, who now might be doing two full-time jobs as well because other kids have left the island, or counselors. And so then you have tired, overworked teenagers, not necessarily teenagers, because we don't hire just teenagers, but, you know, young people who are, who are really stretched, taking care of our kids at a time when there are fewer resources, and they don't know the kids. So it's, it's a lot about, about resources and safety. So we actually are, we have a specific program, it's the Bridge Program, that is only for kids who have gone through our community school adventure camp. So if they've come to a full-day adventure camp for one week, then they're eligible to be able to come to Bridge Week, because all of our camp counselors are there for the summer. They're dedicated for the summer, and we will find, we, if, as, we don't, we haven't advertised it, because we want to make sure that we have the camp counselors at the end of the summer, because sometimes they say they're going to be here, and then they're not. So we don't want to have to cancel, but we are probably going to be doing a more concerted effort in building those programs for those two weeks.
I think it's a really difficult staffing week for just about everyone on Nantucket.
Right.
But I, I wanted to personally commend the specialty programs and the creativity and partnering with other nonprofits to find those kind of niche program opportunities. And the swimming, I was just curious to see, and it'll be interesting to see. Oftentimes, I'll go to swim, and I feel really badly because I don't want to interrupt the lifeguard, but there isn't somebody at the desk, and I'm like, oh, I've got to pay and give my check. And I wonder how often people aren't signing up, so how many people are getting not recorded in a night?
Right.
Because it looks like there's a little bit of a drop, and I, based on how busy the pool is, I'd be shocked if that was accurate.
As you're talking about the drop in number for both adult and youth.
And I just, that pool is one of our greatest resources, particularly in the off-season, and it's busy. It's sometimes even difficult to find a lane. So with the assistant director, I'm sure that kind of support will give Jim some help in making sure that those counts are accurate. I wouldn't be surprised if next year, we saw a jump in the number just from more accurate tracking.
Right. And he would say, though, because we did, we have talked about this, and I do agree because it's very easy to go through, and it's not, I think that people, well, I think what happens, honestly, because Nantucket's a pretty honest place, is there's payments.
Yeah.
And they may be putting their name down, and the money's there, but, and they're tracking it.
Yeah.
But we don't necessarily know who it's going to, so that's harder to track.
Yeah.
But we do track it.
Yeah.
And, and keep that in there. But the, what Jim has commented on is that there is actually, there are many more outdoor pools where people choose would rather swim that were in place now than, than years previous, and that he's been seeing that pattern happening during the summer.
Well, sometimes I think the times that are most convenient for adults are the times that are best for the students. So, you know, yeah. We could probably perhaps have a second pool and build it.
We, you know, second car, second pool.
We're, we're.
Outdoor community pool.
Heated pool. I think it's great. We should all dream. We have other ideas that I'll get to in just a moment.
Tim? Oh, sorry. Do you still have another question?
Just one last one.
Sure.
On the first, last page, the first column for FY '12, under Early Childhood Center, the math of 9163 does not seem right to me.
No.
I think if you add those, you get 1206.
Right.
And then it was over inflating the bottom number because it struck me that they were such a huge.
Thank you for catching that. You always get those from me.
I know, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's good.
But I think if you probably, your attendance has actually been growing very steadily, and that, that wasn't reflected there.
Thank you.
Thank you for catching that.
Thank you.
We'll get that corrected.
Now, do you have that planned for the hot turf field?
I don't have it with me, but thank you for bringing that up. That was a huge part of the summer. Thank you. All a blur. So for those of you that are not aware, there was, it was a hot summer, and we had the turf field, and we are planning with the community recreation, Blair managing that was, he did a stellar job again. But, you know, the turf is hot, and people were very concerned, and so we addressed it. We pulled in, and Dr. Lepri is our healthcare consultant for, under our camp manager, gave us some good feedback. Cassie Moran did quite a bit of research, as did Blair and myself, and we've been looking at that and been looking at how we want to structure things going forward. We thought we had another year of, not year, like a full year, but we thought we had more time to really delve into that until we realized just how hot it was. And then that's going to influence how we, how we structure, what can be scheduled when during next summer. And we've been, in our stakeholder meetings with community recreation program, and the org, or the leaders of the organizations understand that, and are, we're already having those conversations because we need to plan a year ahead. So we do have a new health, heat index, safety protocol that we follow.
Excellent.
So if it's hot, it's about adding water, or taking breaks, or going to the grass field, but even those grass fields. So Cassie Moran is, is also our onsite health supervisor, and she makes the call in the morning about what needs to happen, and she, we communicate, Blair communicates to who's on the turf out there and on the fields, but also that applies to the grass fields for the programs that we have with football, baseball, soccer, everything here on campus.
Because one thing you don't think about is, we may be walking around feeling it's hot, but the little kids are actually closer to the ground, and it actually is hotter there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think Cassie really addressed that issue with Kaitlyn, so I think it's, it's really ahead of the curve in terms of what's been going on other places. I mean, in Framingham, there was a lot of angst about kids out playing on a turf field and essentially getting burned because it was about 130 degrees on the field.
So we have a, we have a stopgap so that our kids will not have that happen.
I appreciate how quickly you implemented that.
Thank you.
In the midst of camp sessions.
Well, it never happens when, that's how that works, and it's okay, but thank you.
Right. Thank you. Pauline?
Just a couple of comments, just how much I appreciate sort of this. This is, to me, I just think this is a contract nightmare, which is all of these people that she's got working.
Yes, it is.
For one who knows.
It's lots of them.
But it's, it's amazing, it's great what you've done. And I think one thing that we should keep in mind, and I do speak from experience, is that Kaitlyn's staff, you heard her talking about the summer folks and the staff being tired, but her staff work year-round, and they don't have a down period. So I think it's important, and I know you do make sure that your staff take breaks and vacations because most of them are year-round staff, but you keep going, and then when everybody's kind of ramping up from being off all summer, you're still, you know, you're getting ready for your next busy season. So I think we should all just be aware and conscious of that and appreciate it.
That's a good point.
Of your staff.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Vacations are important.
I think that, yes, I think that she's kicking me under the table because I might need them for myself. But yes, that's exactly how it works.
It's simple and fast to recognize.
Thank you.
It is.
So I wanted to just, I did want to just bring up, because there's a lot going on in the community, but that we have had a lot of contact about, you know, our early childhood program and how we can support families that had kids in the program that the program's no longer there. So we are collaborating and talking and trying to help support any solutions and training. You know, our, the grant that we have is through the Department of Early Education Care. And that is the licensing agency and that does quite a bit with the programs out on the island. And we have a coach mentor that, through our adult education, through the CEEP contract that you guys have approved over the last two years, who's been out coaching and helping support the providers of childcare services. So that's something that I think is going to be even more in the public eye, that people are going to see, or I just wanted, with the closure of We Railers. Okay. So, sorry, I just made the assumption that everybody knew. So it closed last week.
Yeah. It's supposed to be a temporary close.
And it might, yeah. So right now, we have 40 families that are affected immediately but for childcare. So that's just something that we're working on supporting the families that are affected. We've had, I meant to have, get some pictures. And I always yell out to Lindsay over there, great picture ops for kids in the ECC right now. They're utilizing that. There's a co-op of parents that are working together to cover the childcare needs. And they're accessing the Early Childhood Center with the kids, keeping them engaged. And I'll get that in a minute. So we're looking at other ways that we might be able to strategize or collaborate to help come up with a solution for the short term. So, you know, we're here to, however we need to support.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, transportation numbers.
Yeah, just to give you a quick update, it's still early in the year. But I've been in touch with Linda. We have six buses. The capacity of those buses is generally 71 students. We have 45 students on the Maticet Run. We have about 45 students on the Scunset Run. 46 on the Old South Run. 46 on the Pulpus Run. And 40 on a Town Nobedear Run. And 50 on the Airport Run. And since adding the sixth bus, which we did a year ago, that has mitigated some of the challenges that we have. And so Linda felt like we were in a pretty good place right now. Sometimes in the afternoon, of course, with the Boys and Girls Club, she said some cases, they have 20 kids going home on a bus. But that's, it's not unusual between sports and Boys and Girls Club for those numbers to decrease for the afternoon run. And so I think that we're in pretty good shape right now. I think another factor is that the bubble is sort of going into the high school with our enrollment numbers now. And kindergarten had 85, so the numbers were down. So I would imagine that that is contributing in some way to the numbers that are, that we find on the buses. But that will shift with different seasons, sports seasons and the winter season.
You'd rather have some empty seats than overcrowding and not enough.
Right. So we're in pretty good shape. And that's what Linda wanted me to share with you.
How many kids are allowed to drive to school?
How many are allowed to?
I mean, are there parking spaces?
I think we have around 50 parking spaces. And we have been able to meet all of the requests to John Lucchini for parking. So we're in pretty good shape. And we actually have a few more spaces in the student lot at this point. So I think we're in good shape.
It seems to me that there is a rationale on the school to career, or school to work. There's a necessity to be able to drive. But I don't know about the other ones, and that perhaps may increase the bus usage.
Well, it could.
Or an assassination attempt.
If we do have the space, I'm not sure why we would, you know, deny them that ability. So, you know, Parker's not here to argue that, but he did drop by my office. And I made sure that he walked through all the parking that was out there.
Very nice.
So, anyway, and we have certainly accommodated those students who do the juniors and seniors in the, in that program.
I have to say, I was impressed that they held an emergency preparedness, you know, for the bus last week. They had the kids do a dry run of getting off the bus, right? That's the first time I've heard that.
They've done it every year.
Okay.
Every year. You just probably get to look at it this year.
Yeah. That's good. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that they're keeping safety first.
That's all I have.
All right. Any comments from the public? Yes, hi.
My name's Ashley Hay. And I just, I noticed that the preschool meeting here today, and I thought it was appropriate if I came. I am one of 40 families that the We Railers closure has affected. And I don't know what's going to happen with We Railers. I've sent all three of my kids to the program. And it's heartbreaking to see it close like that. And I'm just here to put a base to this closure. And if the community school can help in any way, we'd appreciate it. I'm sorry, I'm a bit emotional, but I just want to put a base to this. This is truly affecting 40 families. 40 kids are out of this preschool that they've gone to every day. My daughter's gone to it for two and a half years. It's a starfish, and this is a crucial year for her as a pre-k. That the program they have as a starfish, we really prepared it in the beginning. So the teachers there do a great job doing that. And I just thought it was appropriate when I saw the community school presenting. So I can speak to you guys about things going on in the community. And it could be a, potentially, we could look at this as, I know, I don't know if it's mandatory now for pre-k, but when the new bill even gets up and running, bringing pre-k into the old school, I'm sure.
Thank you so much for coming.
So if I can speak to that. And we've had, I've met with Caitlin today to talk about this. The Community Foundation meeting at Sherburne Commons this afternoon at 4 o'clock was addressing this issue. And I was, had some email correspondence with, can't remember her name, but somebody from the early childhood state. And who had reached out to see what we could do. The schools will be able to help in the, in the long term. Part of our design of having the grades three, four, and five in the new intermediate school was exactly this, to make it possible for our preschool, and I'm speaking right now of four-year-olds, in the, in the, what will be the old elementary school starting in September. So we will have the space to bring in probably private providers who could come into the school but use the space. We could do that with three or four classrooms. Should, should that be, you know, the providers be there to use it? And we think it's a great way to, to bring those children into the school that many of them will attend from there on. So, starting in September, that will be a possibility. I think the bigger question that we're scrambling and everybody's trying to come up with an answer is, what do we do between now and then? And it is a grave concern. And we hope that this will be short-term, but we don't know that. And so I know Caitlin's had several conversations and provided some suggestions for that. So if that helps you at all, it is and always was the plan for the elementary school to serve that population when the new school opens. Okay? Yeah?
Sure. Please stand.
Jennifer Joyce. So I'm in the same situation as Ashley. And I think a particular concern, especially to us as parents, is there are 16 families or 16 students registered at We Railers as of this past Friday who are actually in the starfish group, who are headed to kindergarten next year. More than we want in public schools, or public school families, working families, single parents. Who don't, we're out of options right now, so we're reaching out to everyone. But I think one of our biggest concerns for our children is just, you know, as we figure this out, what options might we have with kindergarten readiness? How people can help us? Is there something in, I know there's something in the summer that some people go to. But for those of us who might be in a situation for a length of time with essentially the babysitters, where we figure this out, this group of 16 kids coming into the kindergarten, you know, what do we do to get them into a situation where they're ready to go?
Right.
I know my son is not ready to go. So just, you know, not to jump on him, but to add anything where I think that's really concerned. And I know nobody can solve the problem right now. We just wanted to make sure everyone's really aware of what's going on.
I think, again, we're very aware. And if this were a protracted amount of time, and we don't know what that will be, we will, we'll have that conversation about expanding Summer Boost to help the needs. Summer Boost has always been a program for children who haven't had, either haven't had a preschool program or have had limited exposure to preschool programs. So I think that would be quite natural to open it up to those children, especially if they go from now to, you know, this summer. I hope that, I hope that that's not the case. And I hope that there are some spaces that could open up as the community does what it often does. And that's rally around our children. So I'm hopeful that people in the community will step forward with the space. And then it's a matter of, of putting together the program and staffing for that. If, if that is necessary, and we don't know that yet. Yeah.
Thank you very much for coming tonight and sharing your story. Thank you. Melissa, do you have something? No? All right. Moving on to votes to be taken. Everyone had the chance to look at the budget directives and give Mike any added suggestions. So at this point, can we make a vote?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And the superintendent's performance goals. May I have a motion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And a vote for approval to raise the substitute teacher rate to $100 a day. Would you like to, yeah, absolutely. Sure.
We've talked about this over the years. And I think you know that we, we do a rate comparison every year. We haven't really updated that since, I think, probably last November. But subs, you know, come and go sometimes. It's usually the case that in a good economy, it's harder to find subs because they have other options. It's also the case this particular year that we have hired many of our subs for teaching assistant positions in our schools as they become open, and especially with several late resignations this year. So we have, we've used a lot of our subs and hired them full-time. One thing that I would like to suggest is that you might amend this proposal to be $100 per day for teachers and increase the teacher assistant rate to 80 instead of 75. I'm not convinced that this is totally a rate issue. But I do think in this economy and with this dearth of candidates that raising it some degree would help. So I would ask that you consider not only what we presented to you, but the increasing the TA rate too.
Question?
Mike, where does the teachers' union stand on this?
You know, the teachers' union does not really enter into this in terms of the negotiated agreement. I think that they, in conversations with people, I think they would support that move. I think they would support it being even higher. But I think that this puts us above the districts on the mainland, considerably above the districts on the mainland, and a little bit above the vineyard. Although they may be meeting and discussing this very same issue over there. I'm not sure.
But this isn't a collective bargaining issue?
No. The rate of the subs is not a collective bargaining issue. Where it used to relate to the collective bargaining issue is that it's, the rate of compensation for unused days entered into that. But that was on a percentage and then was changed in the last bargaining to a dollar figure. So it would not impact positively or negatively the collective bargaining agreement.
I would just like for the minutes to reflect what it's going from to.
From 90 to 100 and from 75 to 80. Thank you.
So may I have a motion to approve to raise the substitute teacher rate to $100 a day and the teaching assistant rate to $80 per day?
Move and approve.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? May I have a motion to?
But that, it should reflect what Zona brought up.
Yes. Yep. Logan got that. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve September 6 minutes?
Move and approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And transfers and invoices. May I have any questions on transfers and invoices? May I have a motion to approve?
Move and approve.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Superintendent's report, building project update.
Yeah, a quick update on the building project. We hope, I will find out tomorrow, actually. But it is our hope that we will open the middle school sixth grade addition on Monday, the 26th. That is pending an inspection tomorrow and some approvals to go ahead. That's important, of course, for the sixth graders. I'd like to give the teachers and the staff a lot of credit for making this work in the interim. They've worked hard, haven't complained about the inconvenience. So we'd like to have it. But we also recognize that next week is the open house for the middle school. And so that's another driving force to try to get it open and occupied with our students. So excited. You can see a lot of work that's been done outside. So that is one piece. The other piece is the site work. I have to give Tom Hanlon and grade a lot of credit for their work on the site to get it done. And I think, other than a few hiccups here and there, the drop-off and pickup have worked really quite well. And we've been able to spread it out and get some of the traffic off of the surfside. And the third part, the more important part maybe to some people, is the new intermediate school. school. Right now, it is ahead of schedule and, as you know, we've always targeted a September If it were done in May, and I, I still think that that's a, a lot has to happen between now and then, so it's a little early to get too excited about being ahead of schedule. But if it were ready in May, I'm not sure that I would suggest that we make that move at that time. It really, as tempting as it is, I've moved into a new building, a new high school in December, and that was exciting and interesting in New Hampshire in December. So really, it's, it's too early to, to really speculate until we get further. They've got to finish the envelope and the, the roof and, and exterior need to be done and they've probably got six weeks to do that, depending on, on what we get for weather.
Sounds like if they are ahead of schedule, it's a great opportunity for the community school to provide some programming during the summer and test it out while everyone gets settled. But I would echo your sentiment, that makes absolutely no sense to disrupt the students and the teachers in May. It's too distracting anyway to be in school in May.
So, so we'll see. If, any questions on the building project?
Well, it looks great. And as a parent, during the drop-off, I just, I'm so pleased with the way the route is and how safe our students are. I'm excited to see what happens with the bridge of the sidewalk on First Way as that develops, but what's there right now is just infinitely better than the way it was a year ago.
Thank you.
So I think it's, we have a lot to be grateful for.
We do. On, on the horizon, we're in pretty good shape. The, the next meeting, October fourth meeting, will be a little bit longer. We have state assessment results that should be released from the embargo at that time to share with you. We will have the school improvement plans and so typically that takes a little bit more. We've pushed the ESL update to the second meeting in October, just trying to balance out the, the agenda. And we met this morning with the ad hoc budget committee and Zona and Melissa met and we would hope that we will have the, a budget planning calendar, but it might not be for the October fourth meeting. It might be the second meeting in October. That's what I have.
Thank you.
Just on the calendar, I see you've got the school calendar conversation for October eighteenth. I've been talking to some parents, I've also spoken with our athletic director, and I would like if the committee would be willing to, we talked about this at the last meeting, to have maybe a forum on vacation, to propose, I'm gonna put you out there, Mike, just to have the, just to have the conversation about potentially looking at doing a two-week period for vacation or keeping February, April vacation. What I'm hearing from parents and from the athletic director, although I'm not going to speak for him because he would like to be present when that conversation happens, but from what I understand from parents and others, for the athletics, it is a challenge because families often have to not go on vacation because their kids are playing sports. And the other piece is that I hear from parents who are seasonal employees or have businesses that April is not a time that works for them to be able to take a week off. So they're either scrambling for childcare or the kids are left at home. I just want us to have the conversation because I think that there is a good conversation to be had. I'm not putting it out either way, I'm just thinking that perhaps this might be a time for us to talk to the private schools as well as parents to see if there's any appetite for a two-week block on vacation. And yes, I'm willing to get slashed publicly for that, but I'm just thinking we should have the conversation. That's all I'm saying.
It's perfectly appropriate to have the conversation. I'm not sure how we make forward momentum on a recommendation without input from the community.
Absolutely. Logan?
Calendar, draft calendars on the website.
Great. Thank you.
Is it possible for any of the schools who have Facebook pages to maybe push that survey? Ask the administrators or whoever manages their social media pages to push that out?
Is there a question about two weeks or is it just? Oh, there is. Oh, good.
There's four questions on there. One of them is about that.
Great. Thank you.
If I, if I see it on social media, I'll certainly share it and maybe some of our media friends will also. It, it's the devil we live with, but it's an, an easy way for, for us to get some input.
But if you didn't have an April vacation, you could get out of school before the twenty-third or June. And that's what now snow does.
I thought somebody said we couldn't, but that was another story. I thought that was a whole thing that somebody said. Well, maybe it's a conversation I had with one of the principals.
No, it's radioactive issue.
No, you can, you have to do a hundred and eighty days. So if you only have a one, one week vacation, you will end school five days earlier than you.
She didn't say one week, she said two.
Well, Tim, Tim was just...
I was suggesting one.
He suggested one week. Right. So, you know what? If, if, this is your calendar and so if, if you want us to have a forum, we will have a forum. I will look for all five of you to be in front.
I'll be on vacation.
Add that forum.
She's gonna take her April vacation early.
Because, you know, this is a, a touchy issue and everybody, you know, will, has an opinion on it, but not everybody will come to the meeting. And you always have to be careful, whether it's with the survey that we do or whether it's a forum, about whether you're really hearing from the whole community. And so I would just caution you about that. It's a better opportunity than just making the decision without. So I understand that.
Well, like everything, it's hard to get the whole community, but I think with open house, is it this week? Wouldn't it be a great idea to bring it up at open house?
Or the survey?
That'll start the conversation. I know what you're thinking, Mike, but it would, put it out there and have them start thinking.
I, I wouldn't, only because open house is a different purpose. I'm not saying that we don't have the conversation, but you can get it out to the community a, a different way. I think it becomes a distractor for open house.
And maybe we could ask Lindsay to maybe mention the website and the survey.
They usually put something together in the open house website.
Thank you.
So get something out there.
Thank you very much. I think that's good. I've actually, I've heard both sides. I've heard two weeks is a struggle for families who can't afford to go anywhere and it's two weeks with their kids at home and not, you know, having anything to do in the middle of winter. And I've had, you know, heard from families that say they'd love to have two weeks and April vacation is a challenging time to take time off, so it'll be interesting.
I mean, I do think that you're never going to come to a consensus, a hundred percent consensus agreement. And so whatever decision we make has to just be an informed one. And that's, that's...
But I just think if we don't put it on the table, we don't know. That's all I'm suggesting, is I think we should have the conversation.
And how does this, how does this affect the, the teachers, you, you know, the union? How does this?
Would be the same day of instructional training.
Well, it wouldn't affect, because you're still doing one hundred and eighty days plus six.
Okay.
Now, I'm, they might have an opinion, certainly, but it wouldn't, the collective bargaining agreement wouldn't prohibit you from doing one or the other.
Okay. And I know we had also mentioned a forum on uniforms and I thought that was something that I spoke to Mike about again, because as everybody's just getting back to school and everybody just did their school shopping, it might be an appropriate time to bring up the school uniform. And I keep looking at Zona over here, forum, and bring families together.
I have nothing left to say today.
Okay.
So you were thinking that we would do that together?
No, I wouldn't say together, but I, I know that is something, that is something we, we spoke about. So...
So could...
That should be on, on the calendar sometime.
We want to have the vacation forum before we meet on the eighteenth or whenever we're meeting, dating.
Or we could, or we could push that back, yeah.
Calendar decision, conversation.
I think we should definitely push the calendar decision back if you guys are agreeable to that.
Finding a date in October to host a forum and then meeting on the calendar in November may be a more sane schedule.
Okay.
All right.
But I would also, you know, I, I'm somewhat ambivalent on forums, having spent a lot of time in different capacities preparing for them and having ten or fifteen people come and watching them on the TV but not participating. So I'm much more in favor of ways that we can get the survey out in front of as many people as possible through the...
I agree.
...camer. You know, even if it's not a topic of conversation at open house, having it up, maybe a QR code or something that parents can get to it easily, somehow just pushing the concept of it. I think an electronic response is going to give us much more information than a forum. And that's just my personal opinion.
No, I think you're right.
I agree.
And I think some people don't like to speak publicly in a group, so they may come, but they may not voice...
Asking the administrators who manage the social media and the schools to push it out through Facebook and their Twitters, we're, I think we're bound to get much more feedback that way and it's far less time-consuming than preparing for a forum in which, you know, takes effort.
Right.
The question's already out there.
Right. I agree.
As long as we can feel comfortable.
Yeah, so maybe we have a, a date by which we say, you know, we need your answers to the survey by, because we're having this as an agenda item in November and that saves us from having to have a public forum. And, you know, I'm more than comfortable with having people email me as a school committee member, calling me as a school committee member to share anything that they'd like to verbally. But the survey is really probably our best conduit.
I think so. And I think open house is a good place to make mention of the, you know, our website and the survey. Exactly.
Go there.
Exactly. Thank you.
But I, you know, I, I trust Mike and the admin team to, to figure that. I personally don't feel convinced that a forum is, is necessary.
Thank you.
No, I was just looking to make sure that people had an opportunity to be heard.
I would also say that you will notice there's no way to escape from this room.
Yes. All right, moving on to subcommittee work groups. We don't have Sierra here. Does anyone have anything to report?
The new scoreboard was...
Oh, very nice.
It's awesome.
Very nice.
It's awesome. And teacher negotiations, we have our first meeting on the twenty-sixth.
We do?
Yeah.
Coming up.
Perfect. Great, thank you. So our agenda for next meeting, we sort of already went over that?
Yeah, I think the two big items are the school improvement plans and the state assessment.
Okay.
I'll, I'll take that calendar piece off for the fourth because we won't have had even enough time for feedback to the survey before then. And it may be that if you, if you don't get the return on the survey, then, then we do a forum.
Okay.
Right?
Perfect. So I'm gonna confirm now that, for now, we're just focusing on the survey.
Do we want to put a measurement down? Do we want to say we want to hear from a certain percentage of families? That would make us feel that we've had to...
How are you gonna even monitor it?
Right.
Is there a way to monitor?
Uh, no. Is it Survey Monkey or?
No, it's actually built into the website.
The website.
I can, I can see when fifty people have responded and I can say that's, you know, you put in the percentage numbers of our population, population, you can't know unless I break it down that that was ten community members and six teachers and twenty students and...
Well, you can't even know whether somebody did it multiple.
Yeah, I was gonna say, one family surveyed.
I'm for the limit that you can only respond once.
Yeah. Oh, good. Good.
Survey is given to the student, the teacher, whatever.
Does it ask you?
Coming from the same email or coming from the same...
Yes, email, it's by email though, but it could be four different emails in one family.
But I can't, you know, that's...
Yeah. This one, I, I apologize, I didn't see it, but is one of the questions a qualifier? Are you a student, teacher? So, you know, I, I would say let's not limit ourselves or, I, I'd say let's see the survey results, but give ourselves a time by which we're going to take that down and analyze it and look at it so that we can just see if it feels like a, a good cohort. I, you know, I'm not sure we know enough about, until we know what the outreach is, we're not gonna know what an appropriate number is. But, you know, if we only get a hundred and fifty responses, that might say something to us.
Yep.
It usually happens when the wait gets out, that the survey is up and everybody's doing it to it and you do it. And then it wanes for a bit and then somebody says it again and it resurges, getting not as high, but it still comes through another chunk of responses.
We had a pretty good number last year.
Is it in Spanish as well?
I did not.
Can we do that? Possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Let us know if we can help with the outreach of it, because I think it's important to us all. So if there's ways that we can help share it, you know, if I get a...
You're on Facebooks.
Yeah, exactly. Or even if it's in...
It's on the district page on the calendar system.
Perfect.
Great, thank you. Before we adjourn, we just want to wish our fearless leader a happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Goodbye, Mike. We're not gonna sing. We'll spare you if that's your birthday.
Thank you. Thank you.
I love drawing attention to my birthday.
Yes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
So move second.
Thank you very much.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Mike.
You have time to go to a nice dinner, hopefully, right?